I thought maybe Bethany would hop on, so. Do you know where the booklet is though from the hospital? We might need to talk about that. We put a blip in the supervisor's box.
In all the supervisors' boxes.
This week you did?
No, it was a couple of weeks ago or last week. It's okay if you can't find it. We were just gonna reference it because we didn't keep one for us. We just, we only got one, so. Nope, it's like a little booklet.
Is it the resource book?
It is.
Yeah, Suzie, I gave her the book.
Yeah. We're talking about the resource.
And Bethany said she's trying to keep that up to date.
Yeah, it looks like that, but it's the legitimate book that's made. That's why we wanted to see this.
But that's, I think that is the updated one.
That's what we printed off, but yeah, I wanted to show everybody the book. Actually, what we were gonna have printed, if you guys approve it. Maybe we'll have to wait. Hey, Elizabeth. Okay, I have no idea where it's at.
You just leave one?
We only got one from the hospital because they're like $4 apiece.
I could've gone and got it, but now I'm not.
She's gonna call you, so.
Calling everybody.
We're just, we're trying to figure out the resource guide first.
Okay.
We got one from Bethany at the hospital.
Right.
And brought it over. We're putting it in the supervisor's mailbox. But we wanted to show everybody what it looked like. And we didn't get one for us because we're like $4 apiece to print. So we printed this off at the health department, which is the information. But I wanted to show what the book, whoops, sorry, Joe. But I wanted to show what the book actually looked like.
They have a link there, but what's, I mean, it's on their website, right?
Yes, but here's the issue. If they're gonna ask for opioid money to print it, I wanted everybody to see what the actual book looked like.
Why would we print it when things change so much?
Well, because, for example, the ambulance would like to have some. So then like when they have somebody in the rig, it might be a non-transport or something. Then they can give somebody a resource guide and say, hey, these are some resources that are available in the county. They didn't want to print a whole bunch of them off, but they wanted to have some to hand out.
I think we'd do better with like a QR code. I know we talked about doing that or having.
I'm telling you that people over the age of eight are not gonna do that.
What if we have just like a one pager then? Because that would be easier to print and then easier to update.
Well, they have, the hospital updates it annually, and that's all the information that's in the booklet. All this right here.
We thought it'd be better just to have a base of something to give.
Yeah. Because the demographics of 70, 70-year-olds and older are not gonna use a QR code or they're not gonna go to the internet. We know that because we get those phone calls. Not everybody that's that age, but so.
No, some of us, because just an example, I'm almost 77. And when our mental health group was gonna use the QR code for updating mental health resources, I'm on a Zoom saying it's a great idea. I'm texting my grand saying, what is a QR code?
Yeah, I mean, my mom's 80, and she wouldn't even know how to turn a computer on. She doesn't have a smartphone. She doesn't know how to turn a computer on, or they don't have access to the internet. And then they, you know, so.
I think that's a great idea. I just feel like, the only reason why I was bringing up these issues is because I know that we've had these conversations before. And we were kind of talking about, right? Like, I don't know if it was in this group or.
Might've been the ACT.
ACT, we were talking about having like a one pager because it's easier to update. It's easier to print or having a QR code. I feel like those are things that we were batting around at some point. So maybe those conversations to progress.
Well, and this is the whole entire resource guide for the county that the hospital updates annually. We know once it's in print, it's not. So I don't know, Joe, you'll have to ask Suzie where it's at because it'll have to come back to the committee. To the supervisors, let me amend that if you're gonna pay for any. She had an appointment. Yeah, she has an appointment. Yeah. So anyway, I don't know where it's at. We brought one over, but.
It might also be helpful. I know at one point when we were talking about just having a one-page resource guide, giving it to the jail for people who are discharging.
Right.
I think that might be helpful.
Right.
For people who want it.
Right. Right, or they could print, I mean, or they could, but Law Center could print, I mean, they could print this off or.
Well, I mean, so could the hospital, I mean, you know, like if we're talking about printing it, spending opioid funds to print it, is that what we're discussing?
Yeah, we talked about it in a couple of different meetings.
So, so if that's what we're talking about, we could also give some to the Law Center, right?
Yeah, there was gonna be, yeah, I don't remember what meeting this was, but Bethany brought it up. They had requested some funds for some printing from the opioid dollars. Some specifically to the hospital and others to go countywide to be distributed wherever they need to be distributed. I don't need any because we print some off or whatever, but.
Chris, do we know how many she wants or how many the ambulance wants? I mean, I think it's reasonable that we spend five, even a thousand.
Yeah, I don't take minutes for this meeting, so I don't know. Bethany knows, Deb, did you take minutes?
I did, let me read through and see if we discussed it.
No, it's just like a work, no, we don't, we don't ever call it to order really. Well, sometimes she does. We just start, Joe had to call it, Joe called it to order, I don't care. I mean, it's not really.
Oh, I'll call the meeting to order.
There you go. I mean, we didn't even know Joe was gonna be or something. Otherwise, this is like a workstation. I think we should table it till somebody from the hospital's here, until Suzie's here, because it's gonna have to go back to the supervisors anyway for funding.
We were waiting to see how much they were for copy before we decided how many. Well, at first we thought 65 cents a copy, and then we find out it's $4, which makes more sense, you know, with the whole booklet.
It's a booklet like that, except, I mean, it's like.
It's about, you know, just about this size.
Yeah, and it's a very nice booklet that has all the information in it. And it's for people that don't have access to the internet or not able to utilize it. You know that.
I stand her evidence. If you want to look through it.
No, I'm not gonna look through desk things.
I looked up. You might find my Alliance Quest stuff there too, will you?
We have some of that too.
Be helpful, do you think? I was thinking maybe the library, but if you're there, you have access to the internet already, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe. Connie, do you think having one at City Hall would be beneficial? I mean, I'm just wondering where we could have them so that people could reference them? If there were questions or if there are city, you know, staff who wanna answer a question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, well, I do think it would be worthwhile to have some at City Hall.
Yeah, we, years ago, we used to have a booklet like this. Years and years ago. And it didn't cost $4 to print it, but everything goes up. Plus, it didn't have nice pictures like this one has. It was just like a paper copy that was like, you know, had tabs. So you know what I mean, like a sequential.
It's an excellent resource. It took a lot of work to put it together.
Yes, because we helped with that too when they initially put it together. So it's like all the community partners coming together to give information. And we know that it's not current once it's printed, but you do the best you can.
One part, paper or otherwise, the key is having the community be aware that it exists.
I know.
I mean, it's really important, it's a great resource.
It is, it is.
And yet, that's a challenge to.
Yeah.
Inform.
Yep. Yep, so I think we're just, I think we're just looking at ways to expend some of the dollars in an appropriate way that would impact the community for resources. So, anyway. Maybe Bethany can give us one and we can hold on to it, bring it to the next meeting. We'll hold it hostage so we can all see it.
I'm sure it's probably open.
I'm sure it's stuck in, maybe.
You're welcome, but look, I looked on top.
No, it's okay.
It's all right.
Because I, in her mailbox, I put that copy in the booklet. And then in your case, I put just the, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, Elizabeth, that printed copy that you're looking at, would that be sufficient for City Hall just to have copies like that?
I, I mean, I believe so. I don't know that it would have to be.
The booklet. Then everybody could just print their own.
Found it, yeah.
I mean, that's what we do.
Yeah.
But we were trying to have them have so many printed to hand them out, like at a health fair or something like that. Or in the ambulance, if somebody's in the ambulance, they need a resource guide. And even for some of the staff, because the staff all doesn't live in this county, they don't know all the resources.
Right.
I mean, nobody knows all the resources because they change frequently.
One of the doctors at a different county health center asked me about it. And I mean, he obviously can do it.
Right.
Electronically, but he wasn't even aware it existed and he worked there.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I've worked in public service for 30 years.
Man, that's great.
You can't, you can't make people learn things. You can't make people be involved with things. You just, you just can't. So I think we just need to park it and move on because we're not gonna today.
Personally, you know, I would, I'll just make a motion that we print a couple hundred of them and pass them out. The ones that want the nice booklet, I don't, maybe we only need 100 for like the ambulance or the hospital or a fair.
So you wanna pay, you wanna, are you making the motion to?
To have some printed.
To the supervisors that have so many printed up to a dollar amount?
Yeah.
Because Bethany was gonna check with a print shop out of town, and I don't really wanna do that. I wanna keep it, yeah, I think we need to keep it local if we can. I mean, I don't like.
Do you think, I mean, a couple hundred would last a year?
Yeah.
I would say, yeah.
When, when do they update them? Is there a specific time maybe where they update?
They just updated them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be good.
Okay.
So how much is that? Who is it for? Why don't you say up to $1,000? That way, if there's a little price variance.
Well, and you got tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's not.
Print a couple hundred, whatever that cost is.
Do you think 200, do you think 200 is overkill to start with or not, Connie?
Well, I wasn't sure if 100 be enough. I, you know, whatever you think, I, either.
I think what we need to do too is then, where's the, does it say?
I mean, you can start with 100, Joe, and, and see how long.
I didn't know, I just didn't know where all you would put them and this and that. That's just a thought that I had. It's, if you feel like 200's fine, that's fine.
I could probably get rid of Suzie.
I, well, yeah, people that you serve, yeah, because they don't get on the internet. I mean, we're still a huge demographic that you all.
If they just had a poster too, like when we have our different county mental health awareness table at the art walk and the fair and all those places, I've had one of those booklets to try to show people, but it's hard with everything else going on. And if we, if there was a poster that showed that and said, you know, people walking by could see it. Because I think, I mean, you do need paper copies, but just the awareness of it is something. I mean, only 20% of the people know about 988 numbers right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's crazy to think about.
Is that in here?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot in there. I mean, it's, it's every resource I could imagine and some I couldn't.
Don't quote, we've gotta look at mental health, but I'm pretty sure it is. So, okay, so Connie, what was your motion again?
To print 200 copies.
Or up to $1,000?
Yeah.
Well, I would support your motion, Connie, if it needs a second, and then we could just take it to the supervisors.
Perfect.
I'm a non-voting member, so.
Well, we don't really vote much here.
Support your motion.
Yeah, yeah, and then they'll take it to the full board of supervisors. So I think, you know, I think with the ones that are purchased with the opioid settlement dollars, I think that we at the health department can make a sticker and put it on the back of them and say, this copy is provided by opioid settlement dollars. That way you know who funded the printing of them. Because you know, Elizabeth, when she does her reporting, she has to report off what was done and how the dollars were expended. So I think, you know, if the committee's paying for that, I think it should be referenced there. Thoughts, Elizabeth?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
I mean, as long as, I mean, really, it's just about making sure that we tie it to, you know, a valid purpose. And I think that it's easy to do that. I don't, and as long as I know how much money is spent. I don't think we need the stickers, but.
Okay. I just think sometimes it's nice for the community to know.
Where their money's.
Where their money is being spent.
Yeah.
And they hear that the county got how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of opioid dollars. Where was that money spent? And how, how did we benefit from it? So that's, I deal with enough other grants that you gotta give credit where it's, you know. I know this isn't a grant, but it's still settlement dollars.
Yeah, if it's for the public, but it doesn't need to be for me, that's what I'm saying.
Good.
I think a sticker would help.
Should we keep a log of where this money's going? Because otherwise I just get lost in minutes and all that.
Yeah, we do. Well, the auditor's office does. Shannon knows, and then she tells me no, so that when I do the annual reporting, I know, you know, what money is coming in, what money is going out. Okay, to report interest, you know, all of that.
Okay, you guys want me to move on to Talk Cop for a quick little update? Okay, so I did get the CEUs back from Indian Hills. So we're approved for nursing CEUs, all levels of EMS, respiratory therapy, and social workers. And Indian Hills charges $10 per certificate for those continuing ed credits. We'll have a table set up at Talk Cop, and I hope I can be there. I've got, I'm on notice for federal jury duty starting the 28th of April. So, and then the whole month of May, so I might be here and I might not. So we'll have everything ready for the CE process. Deb and I will work together for that. And then Indian Hills will invoice us after the fact. I have to send them the original copies, so then they know how many certificates they need to bill us for.
Okay.
So then we'll bill it back to this, to this settlement dollars. Connie and I talked yesterday, we have 30 people registered right now. I'm gonna do another, I'm gonna send it out again on Facebook. I'm gonna send it to, which is really pretty good because I've only posted it like once. I know a lot of them. And we have a diverse level or diverse range of people that are registered from nursing to law enforcement to juvenile court to some public health folks, some state public health folks. So we've got a nice diverse group of audience participants for the 8 o'clock class. We're not requiring any kind of registration for the evening class, but I'm just focused on the morning class for CEs, so.
Trying to get people there will be the key, again.
In the evening?
Well, just in general.
Oh, I know, I know. It does help though.
We just had the experience.
Yeah, it does help that we're giving CEs because some people really.
Oh, yeah, for that.
Yeah, yeah, it does help that.
I'll be getting parents and, you know, community members interested.
Yeah.
Are, are the schools willing to put out that poster for the kids? I mean, for parents to come?
Um, I don't know, I'm gonna send it out to the act committee again, so hopefully they can share it.
Okay.
I'll send it out and then anybody can forward it on. I'm gonna send a reminder either later today or tomorrow morning for ACT, and I'll send the flyers.
We might ask Jay at school.
Yeah.
These are the ACT meeting. This does need to be updated, actually. I don't know if we can make additions. There's no mention of 988, and a lot of these legal resources don't exist any longer.
Okay, so that's to Bethany then, at the hospital.
All right, I can contact her, I think, via email.
Are we sure that's even the new one?
I just could ask.
It might be last year's, I just printed it off.
Yeah.
It might be last year's.
Okay, sure. That's fine.
We have to go to the hospital's website to see if it's the most current, yeah, so.
Nice question. This Talk Cop, are public to register to or just those that want CEUs?
For the morning class, we want everybody to register just because there's a space. You know, we can't have 200 people in that room, so.
Okay.
If you wanna come, we'll just jot your name down. For CEs, we definitely wanna have you registered, so.
Well, I'm gonna come one time or the other.
Okay, I'll just pin the ninja. Okay.
It'll be the same both times?
Yeah, it's just not as in-depth in the evening because it's only an hour and a half where it's more hours in the morning. Yeah. And Connie was gonna confirm everything with the convention center. And then Deb and I haven't had a chance to talk yet, but we're gonna, we'll coordinate the muffin situation with the grocery store and then have that ready to go. And then that, that's all part of the opioid settlement funding for this program, so.
No, we won't have anything in the evening.
Right, right, just for the morning class.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you can think of, Connie?
No, I just emailed, just so you know, I just emailed Lauren Mar with the two deputies that will be there. Jesse Hudson and JJ Hudjel. So they will be the ones attending the evening session. They require two uniformed officers 45 minutes ahead of time to be there the whole time for security. And then there are two other deputies that can also be available if need be, but.
Okay. We don't need any for the daytime class, right? Okay. Okay. That was his request.
Oh.
That was Jermaine's request to have somebody there for a community class. Not, that wasn't ours. That was his, so. Anything, anything else? Connie and I had a quick chat last night about it, just to, because I hadn't talked to her. I could, I'd CC'd her on the email stuff when I'm working with this for the CEUs and the flyers and stuff, but.
I think that's it.
Okay. Hey, do you guys have any other questions about it?
Ready to go, but just, you know, post it on your Facebooks and.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be nice to get as many community members as possible in the evening to really understand, for parents to understand what's going on.
Yeah. And I have sent, like, when people email me, we're gonna do a QR code, to your point, Mike. We didn't do it, we did old school. We emailed Chris or called office because sometimes QR codes do not work. I mean, sometimes they do, but sometimes you gotta dink with them. So in my email response to a lot of people, they'll ask some questions about Talk Cop, and I just copied his website address. It's like, here's his website, there's a lot of great information. We heard him speak a year ago, and it's amazing and such great information, so. And then they usually send me an email back, and I'm like, this is amazing, you know. How did you find out about, well, we attended another training in another county. And that's how we became aware of it, because I didn't know he existed either, to your point, Mike. You just don't know, so, okay.
The Southeast Iowa Union be there to put an article in later or the?
I don't know, Connie, I haven't, I haven't talked to Andy, I don't.
Um, I haven't either, but I, I'll call him.
Okay, or I can, I probably haven't, okay, you're gonna do it? I could email him otherwise, so. Or send him a flyer, you know?
Yeah, go ahead and send him a flyer, but I'll follow up with a phone, phone, or a phone call.
I'm making a note. This is where I missed the live radio station.
I know.
I really, and I recorded some ads the other day, and I was up there, and I was just like, it's so sad. We don't have local radio anymore.
Yeah, that's.
I'm super sad about it because it really is a, kinda like, we're kinda like in a news desert in a way, locally.
There's absolutely no way they can't give us that.
We have for a question for way to refer people attending, if we'd have that resource, it's another one to talk about.
Right. Connie, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to talk over anybody. Is, have you talked to Steve? Is there no way that we can, the community can't have a half hour every day?
Uh, you know, I didn't really ask him about that. I just said, because I just said, I go, hey, if we have a measles situation, I said, I'm gonna need to get the word out. He goes, if that happens, he goes, we'll figure out a way to get that done. He, I said, yeah, because I said, I cannot not get information out to the community if something like that happens. He said, we'll figure out how to make that happen. But to your point, I don't know if routinely we could do that or not. I don't know if you have to buy time, I don't know. I know we pay for our ads under the educational line in our budget, but I don't know.
Hey, we have opioid dollars we can fight time with.
Yeah, we can buy some time with opioid settlement dollars.
We'll just talk about drugs a little bit each time.
So.
But how many people even listen to this radio station anymore? I've switched to a Tumwa radio to listen to stuff now. Is, do they have much of a following anymore since they've changed?
I don't know.
It's a good question, it's a fair question.
I don't know, that's, yeah, I don't know, Joe.
So another place, the Chamber always puts out Chamber Chatter on Monday mornings. I get a lot of information of public meetings through that.
I'll send it to Mindy too. See, thanks, Joe. Anybody else you guys can think of? I need to send. I'm not a marketing person, I'm just a nurse.
Your brain doesn't work that.
My brain is like, you know.
Well, it's a good point. I think we should get on the radio at a Tumwa in the next couple of weeks. And I bet we could arrange that with Ellis.
Very good.
I could send him an email.
Okay. All right, we still have plenty of time. I mean, it's only this, what is today, the 7th?
8th.
8th, yeah, we still have three weeks, so.
That'll go fast.
It will, it will. But hey, we, we've been working on it, so. Okay, that's all I have about Talk Cop. Connie, do you have anything else about Talk Cop?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Mike's got some stuff, I think.
Just following up, the handbook on their website has been updated.
Okay.
Includes 988.
Okay, I thought so. This is an old copy.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. I will say this, I was at a public health conference last week, and 988 had a booth, and they have like little, like little checker chips, like a coin chip.
Oh, yeah.
And it says, your mental health matters, and it had 988 on it. And I thought, that was really cool. I gotta see if I can order some.
That's neat.
Because you could like put it in your pocket.
Like sobriety chips?
Yes, exactly like that. It's just like a little chip. Yeah, I thought it was really cool. I never, I gave you one, Deb's on your desk, I gave everybody one in the office, so. Anyway, sorry, I digress.
Okay, and whether, you know, interested in this, you know, I can just tell you as much if you want or not. But through the Lions Club, the, I found out for 40 years, they've had Lions Quest International Foundation's had a social and emotional learning program. The middle school program is in the sixth revision, the others are in the fifth. I've been on the phone a lot with Natalie Mattia, who's the director of it out of Chicago for this program. And it has a very complete curriculum that helps teachers know what to do, how to handle situations. I can show it to anybody that wants to, they gave me a license for a month. I've been able to look at it. It tells where to go for resources, how to get families involved. It can be done at one grade level, it can be done through a district. If Lions, a local Lions Club, as in Fairfield, and we would, would recommend that the foundation make, will make it, will make the license available at no cost. All the training with longtime trainers available at no cost, either by Zoom or will come here and follow up as consultants for the program. And it deals with like starting in kindergarten, just how to make good decisions, how to make friends, and through the whole thing is bullying, how both in terms of how to handle it. If you're being bullied, and you know, they have all this information. But it's a very simple curriculum. It can be infused into school. It's almost like civics class without the government part being taught in it. I mean, that's just what it is. And they're, they're very flexible. It's not being, it's being used some places in Iowa, but hardly any places. It's used all around the world in large cities. But hardly any place in rural high poverty areas where they feel there's a real need and they would like to get involved in that. Fairfield, in approaching them right now at least, with all they're dealing with, with the $2 million out of the budget and all the staff reductions and all that, just feels like they can't add something in. So trying to look at that. But the cost of this would be almost nothing. And it's all you have, all anybody using has to pay for, the paper products. You know, that, that, that students or whoever would use. They also have a component for incarcerated people. Part of that is, in the whole western half, and I have this information, in the western half of Kentucky, their whole judicial system uses it with juvenile justice. As judges to, it wouldn't have to be this. It could just be in addition to, but they use it in in lieu of incarceration. Successful completion of this class is, and they have research to show how it makes a lot more difference than incarceration does, and they use that. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. It could be available to any, either through, I've talked to the Troy or whoever it is. Yeah, thanks. And if, if they wanted to look at that, but I have the complete curriculum here. You, I can go through it from, you know, just, it's well developed. You just kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth. Look at each one of them. I can show it to anybody later that wants to sit down and look at it. Pekin has an interest in at least following up on it right now, but it's just an excellent program. Also, just, just to be aware that federally and at the Iowa state level, the legislature and the governor have said that social emotional learning is not a good thing, that that should take place in the home of, of how you do decision making. But talking to the Department of Educa- Iowa Department of Education, it's still up to any local entity to determine their curriculum. And if they can put this curriculum into anything, it's, uh, where around standards and benchmarks, it's almost always approved. I mean, so a few of the larger cities in Iowa use it and they haven't had any, any challenge with it at all. One thing we found out from kids asking questions was when Emma Benoit was here, thirty-some questions about, we need more in our classwork about for what we're dealing with around behavior health and social emotional issues. And it can be incorporated into a PE program or a health program or any of those classes and at almost no cost. So whether you guys would look at it, it isn't an investment. You know, we need to have somebody wanting to use it. And but, but it, it is a phenomenal program. I have all the information showing the difference it makes. It's used all over the world. It's, I've never seen anything as well developed. I have from Cat, uh, Castle, which is the number, leading organization for this, of this, this is the highest rated program there is. And people can have it for almost nothing. They also have an article on, um, it's called, Every Child Deserves to Feel Safe, Supported, and Valued at School So They Can Focus on Learning. And the idea of that is helping people understand that this isn't trying to take something away from parents, making decisions at home. It's, and they, you know, they can look at it. It's been used in districts in Texas. They call it something different, but they tell the parents, here's what it is, and it's social emotional learning, and then they're having a trouble with it. But I, I would sit down with anybody and go through this curriculum and show you what it is if you can share with people.
I would love that.
I would be really curious, too.
Oh, my God.
It's amazing. I've never seen it. It is so well developed. I mean, just little things like it said, talking to a teacher on the side, all these other resources are there. You could, you know, other things come up. But like one I didn't think of right away, if you're doing something with a younger, on, on making friends or something, and someone brings something up that's a family issue that can't really discuss in the group, how to really make sure you answer them in a way that they feel valued and let them know, you'll talk to them about it later, but that, and then go on with what you're doing, so you don't put, you know, have that child feel like they're being put down or not valued. And so it's, it's just so well developed.
Can you share some of the, it sounds like there's some information about, um, like it being more evidence-based?
Oh, it's every, it's definitely evidence. I have, I can do that one pretty easily.
And then I'm wondering what come, I mean, like, would we have to take it to the school board, I think, in order?
I've talked to them and they, right now, they just feel, this Fairfield just feel, they know it's good and they, and we know it's needed. The idea is that with all the staff reduction, all the people are dealing with, saying, now we're gonna take some training to add something new into what you do in your day.
Well, if the training is free, I mean, if there's.
Oh, it's free. It's not, it's not the dollars.
It's the opioid money.
Well, here, I'm sitting here thinking about this and I've, okay, let, to Elizabeth's point, yes, I wanna see something, but Mike, do you, are you gonna be on the ACT meeting on Monday? Could you give like, can I put aside fifteen minutes for you to do it, like, can you?
Yeah, and if I knew my password, I could put the curriculum on here. No, it is my wife, and I don't know my passwords. But if you wanna look at that real quickly and just go through this, that, this is just.
You don't have to have a password.
Well, I, I was gonna print these up at home, but it's a lot of color. But if you go through this, it'll, it shows all words used in the world, but it shows all the evidence base. And one of the keys is that also achievement goes up. Academic scores go up because if there's more learning taking place and kids feel valued. So I mean, if you, you can skip through some of the pages when it shows other countries, but that's just the overview. That's not the curriculum, but it is just like.
We did share some of this at the last meeting with the group. I don't think you were at the last.
No, I just, I had left some, left stuff here and with you guys.
We did talk about it.
I just want you to be aware of it and.
Mike, what I'm thinking is a way to, and Bart's not here, the sheriff's not here, but it would be awesome to somehow start something with incarcerated population and then maybe get more buy-in from things as it progresses. I mean, I know, we're all busy. We're all doing more with less.
It's just a huge, it is valuable and it's a huge, it's, it's almost a free resource.
Yes.
That the question would be is
Because.
If depending on the demand each year, whether we would even get it for sure, but it's, I'm, I've been in contact so much with the director of the program about how we need something like this that I think we would.
Well, what I'm thinking is we would utilize some of our staff time to instruct the class with the incarcerated population. I'm not asking Bart's staff to do that. I would figure out a way that we could partner with him and do something with either, you know, the court officers, county attorney's office, Bart, whatever that looks like. We would go to the jail. I mean, I know when I worked there um, for advanced correctional healthcare, there was other, you know, like they had the ministerial association come in or the chaplain came in on certain nights. That was all before the pandemic.
I wonder if we should get like juvenile court services involved because it does seem like it's a little bit more geared towards.
Yeah, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever population.
This is K twelve is what you're looking at there, but, but I don't actually have the, they do have it for adults. But I don't have that. That's a new program they're doing, but juvenile justice is the one in Kentucky where it's really already being used.
Yeah, and I, Shaly was our juvenile court person, but now we have a different person.
Andrew Ferguson.
Okay, yeah. She's coming to the tall cop, but I don't know Andrew, but he's not signed up, but I don't know him.
I can forward the information to him.
So.
So anyway.
I just want you to be aware of it and it's, it's needed and super, thank you.
So law enforcement used to come to ACT meeting, but I, you know, they're like everything else. Everybody else, they're doing more with less as well, so I don't know if if we should, I don't know about having twenty meetings, but should we set up a conversation to have with Bart to see what that would look like? I mean, I think it, it's a huge potential to make a positive impact in the people that are incarcerated, so they don't go back to some of the same things that they come.
Right, and, and it's decision-making, it's, it's being va- valued yourself and that's what this whole thing is. This is the one where, what she sent me that shows where it's being used in Kentucky.
I'm gonna make a copy of that.
Well, I have, yeah, you can, but here.
You got it extra, okay. I'll stick this here.
Because.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
Deb's got one.
So what ever state it was, I think it's Kentucky.
When we get back.
Okay.
Well, Kentucky's number one in cancer rates, you know, in the nation.
It's what?
Kentucky's number one in cancer rates in the nation.
Well, we're, we're competing.
We're number two. So, I mean, so if staffing is an issue or if that's a pushback, we could figure out what we could do with some of our nursing time.
I am, I'm sure that whether it was adult or juvenile, wherever they used it, or if Pekin School does, and they'll, they'll also do the, I think I said that for just one grade in a school, too. So they would do it just in kindergarten to get it started if people wanted to try it, or like in third, you know, fifth grade where it's sort of a transition year.
And we could do that, so we could help with the schools.
But it's just figuring out and, and the training for whichever focus of the program, whether it's school or, uh, juvenile justice or incarceration adults, it's the training's there.
I, I know at one point I talked to Bart about getting some kind of resource guy together and getting it at the prison and would that be, the jail, would that be helpful? And he said, yes, and then he also suggested that I contact the Department of Corrections to see, because they're still, they're working with people on a long-term basis, obviously, either that have, are, you know, under the terms of their probation or if they've been paroled. So that might also be a good resource, too, for some of this ongoing social emotional learning, and I can reach out to them.
Got a question. Is this a program that is a semester long at the school or is it just like a week long? No, it, no, it goes all, it'd be once a week for like forty-five minutes all through the school year and, uh, it would just be like in a social studies class or a science class or a health class, you would incorporate one of these units on decision-making, respect, how to, how to get involved in, in groups if you're feeling isolated, how to ask for help if you're feeling you're struggling or something. And the one certainly can, are just completely based, I mean, it's where it need, it's development, it's also, it's evidence-based, but it's also very developmentally appropriate at each grade level. I mean, a lot of work has gone into saying, what, that's why they've had so many revisions. I mean, kids have changed.
Right, right. Parents have changed.
And that's where, that's where the, oh, and, and this does include family. I mean, they can do it separately just for families or include the family with whatever is taking place at school or for the juvenile kids that would be in, on probation. So that's all I have on that. And I, but I'll sit down anytime and just go through the curriculum and you can really look at it. So you, you know what you're talking to people about when you're trying to say there's value.
Yeah.
I'll send an email to Troy Cilly about it, too.
Yeah, because Joe and I serve on the DCAT CPSC board. Joe and I both do, so I wasn't meeting last, I wasn't, I wasn't at a meeting last week because I was out of town, but they're always trying to figure out, you know, how to make an impact and how to get the kids what they need to keep them out of the system and, you know, and a lot of it starts with some type of community support. I mean, to your point, I, I was not, I'm not gonna make a comment to what you made reference to with the state and.
It's just, but, but I checked it out, then it's okay to do, because I, I wasn't gonna try to promote this to find out it was, you just couldn't do it.
Right, from, from the beginning, yeah, yeah, so.
But, and just one other thing, I mean, most of you have seen this, but when Emma Benoit was here and the students from Maharishi and staff of secondary and Fairfield staff asked questions through, uh, an app called SLIDO, which sort of like texting, so they didn't have kids getting up repeating similar questions and they could sort the questions out. That was ninety minutes long. It was very quiet in there the whole time as she presented about mental health. All you heard was a little bit of sobbing from time to time. Kids submitted a hundred and twenty-six questions in an hour and a half and thirty-three of them, if you, we were able to get a copy of it, thirty-three of them are very definitely at risk. And these are our kids asking questions for attention because they weren't getting any attention.
Right.
The other is, though, that, uh, twenty-three were saying, education needed on the topic of mental health, coming from the kid, the students themselves, that they wanted to have learning. So if people need evidence of saying there's a need,
Yeah.
we certainly have. I mean, the kids are telling us.
Yeah. Absolutely. Tell me the name of the curriculum again so I can get it right for that.
Here, just take this. It's, it's Lions Quest.
I couldn't think of it off the top of my head.
It's Lions Quest.
So do you wanna give an update Monday, then?
Yeah, I will, and I'll actually have that, and if, I, I could probably, I can probably send both of these to you, including the curriculum, and you guys just be on your computer. I only have the license for, for a month to share it with people, so it may disappear from us, I don't know.
I can like share it during the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, okay, but I'll get it, I'll get that to you right away.
Okay.
And just how it can be used, I don't know, but I know what's important.
I agree. I'll put you down on the agenda. Elizabeth, do you have anything else for that agenda? Okay. Okay.
And do you guys want the thing of the, when we asked at the fair for the kids of what would make Fairfield a better place, where we got a hundred or so things of what they were wanting, because as you look at this, it's, it's a.
You wanna email that to me?
Sure, I can do that.
Do you know your.
Well, Sue does, and I was gonna say, I didn't say, could you email this?
I got all done my stuff the other day.
I mean, I had, I worked on this. I missed the whole basketball game last night, so I had this ready and then I turned it over since password and I'm going home, man.
Oh, God.
Anyway. But it's.
You missed a good game.
And if, when we did this at the fair for the, you know, for the whole week, asking, just in general, but ninety percent of the people are kids and some on First Friday Art, or some on Farmer's Market. But really for young people, the first question was usually, you really wanna know what we think? And then they stop, they leave, they come back and so they, the things they put, I think were real, you know, they, they were right. They wouldn't take time to write it down. It doesn't mean that if we made some of this available, they would immediately start doing it, because the biggest one was what do we do as groups together? You tell us to get off our phones and there's no, you know, there's no roller, they talk like ancient history, no roller rink, no movie theater, no, the bowling alley's hardly open. There's no place around square for kids to have a, the new games place has potential for that, that's now on South Main. They have board games and all, it's called something.
I don't even know about that.
They were just across from Jet Stop, and now they got a great big house down in South Main. It's a big place where they have tons of
So great.
board, and it doesn't cost, I mean, you just go in there and play games.
Yeah.
But that could be expanded on, that, that would find what the kids really want and have a place to be. So you have those. And now I'm going, I don't need anything else, do I? I'm going to the Lord. This is my day at the Lord's covered. I'm running a truck and stocking shelves. I'm getting pretty good at it.
I'm sure.
I got a few minutes.
Is there any, Mike, thanks for all the information. I just, it's hard sometimes to try to get, I mean, the information's there, the curriculum's there, it's hard to get it to the right people at the right time to implement everything.
I mean, for me, this is almost like when they said through Elevate, we were having the, the mobile crisis response team really was gonna, is there and exists. That, yes, look at something and say, wow, and we, it's here, it's what we need and it's, the cost isn't the issue, it's it's how to incorporate it.
Right, right, because we all know we're all doing more with less, so it's, that's not gonna get any better. I don't know, Lee is not here, so I don't know what all this is gonna entail, like when the mental health regions change again come July first. So I don't know what that's gonna look like either.
They meet tomorrow morning, but this is a, this is the third change since we've had our, our volunteer non-prof, or, yeah.
I know, and I, we have a safety committee meeting at the same time, so that's why I usually don't attend those regional meetings, but I don't know what it's gonna look like. I know Christina from Southern Iowa Mental Health, a lot of times we give a little update of the ACT meeting, but I don't know. Hey, we did, we did pretty good. It's nine eighteen, I'm working.
Especially having me here.
No, you're fine.
Those did information.
It is good information.
I'm gonna check out, see you guys later.
Bye Connie, thanks.
Bye, thank you, everybody.
This is the last thing you get. That's, that's just the, the thing, trying to show why this type of curriculum is so important from that national organization.
Yeah.
Due to motion to adjourn?
Sure, go ahead.
When you have to, I can't leave.
Well, yeah, we don't wanna set up another meeting because Suzie's not here and I don't, did she tell you when to set a meeting, Joe? No, you're just here.
I didn't even know she was gonna be here. I have, they've been in town this morning.
It's on your agenda, though, so.
I know it is, but.
Well, we usually do what, the second, it's the second.
Pardon?
Well, we've been doing.
This is like, well, it was like an extra meeting, I thought, because of tall cop, because of the time of it.